Mr. Vaughn, it's five o'clock.
Thank you. All right, welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three work session for the Palmer City School District Board of Education. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mrs. Schwark.
Present.
Mr. Striker. Mr. Vaughn.
Present. All right, so unless there is an objection, we'll dispense with the reading of the special meeting notice. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm this meeting currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestream throughout the public portion of the meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that a technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. As a reminder, work sessions are held by the Board of Education to provide its members an opportunity to discuss matters. Community members are welcome and encouraged to attend. However, they are not permitted to participate unless the board specifically asks for input. Move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-two dash six-one-six, approval of the written record of the proceedings from November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-two dash six-one-six. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Okay, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-two dash six-one-six has been approved. This brings us to discussion part with Dr. Smilak. We'd really like to introduce our guest today.
First, I want to explain to our community sort of the timing of our efforts for strategic planning. So strategic planning is a very important endeavor that many districts go through, many organizations go through, to really set a three- to a five-year plan of what they want to pursue collectively as an organization or as a district. And we have actually not engaged in that during my time, and we did so selectively. We did so because we had not yet really determined what our facility plan was going to be. And we knew that to really have any broad conversation about the future of the Palmer City Schools without having really the facility and the consolidation plan outlined, there would have been sort of a giant elephant in the room, and it would have always come back to, well, are we going to have two high schools? Are we going to have three? Are we going to have one? So now that we're really through the window of bond issues being available to us and being something that we were trying to get our public to support, now that we really look ahead and probably look more toward the operating side of things in terms of a, of an ask for the community, and realize that when we are successful, and obviously we hope we're successful for an operating levy, certainly that we're not going to come back right away for a bond issue as well. So we know that the footprint that we have as a district right now is exactly what we will have for an extended amount of time. And so we think the time is important right now.
Seeing it, that's why it's doing.
We think the time is important right now to engage in strategic planning. Dr. Cruz and I actually met with three different firms during this process to get a feel for what they would be able to offer our district, and came away very impressed by the Impact Group. It really wasn't even much of a conversation. Their extensive work with school districts throughout Ohio, as well as their extensive work with organizations and the products that they've created, really emulated what we thought we could see as a result of this process. And so we have the Impact Group here tonight to present the process they will use to go through a strategic planning process. And certainly, we look forward to any questions from the Board of Education after they finish. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Lauren Shear and Tom Speaks, who are here for the Impact Group, who will outline the process, and they've provided you with a handout as well.
Thank you. The microphone.
The microphone would be the best.
Well, good evening, my name is Tom Speaks. This is Lauren Shear.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Okay, I want to begin by asking you all a question. Does anyone know what a bucket list is?
Yes.
Okay, what is a bucket list?
Things I want to do before I die.
Things you want to do before you die. Awesome. One of the things we always begin with, and this is something we'll begin when we address your groups, is we'll begin with this exercise. There's something we always say about a bucket list. The phrase "someday" means you're never going to do it. Like someday I'm going to climb Mount Everest, someday I'm going to write the book, someday I'm going to do whatever. You have to have a plan to get there, right? What we, well, we go through a big exercise, but the idea is if you're hoping to do something, it's never going to happen. What we'll encourage people to do is if you have a bucket list item, the first thing you do is you have the guts to write it down. I am going to do this. The next part is you have the guts to write a date. I am going to write the book of my grandmother's memoir, whatever, by Christmas of twenty-six. You put a date, and then you build an action plan and move it back. Here's the thing, whether it's an individual or an organization, if you don't have a plan, it's not going to happen. With a person, it doesn't happen. With organizations, so much more. We have to clearly know where we're going. That's the idea of a strategic plan, right? A strategic plan well done has a couple huge pieces. One is at the end of the strategic plan, we have a clear idea of who is doing what, when, and is it measurable. I don't know about all of you, but I've been in my younger life, I was a part of strategic plans, where at the end of that plan, everybody's like, that was a great plan, great. And then six months later, somebody says, didn't we have a plan? Like, yeah, it's on George's filing cabinet. That doesn't make any sense. If you have a plan, who is doing what, when? So at the end of this plan, there's going to be specific individuals assigned to specific objectives that are, have specific time bounds, that are specifically measurable. That's how you build a plan. Biggest one, the next one, is genuine community engagement. The community has got to be engaged in this. You're here, you serve the community. So we've got to know that the parents are involved, and the teachers are involved, and the staff is involved, and the community, and others. We need to make sure that they really have a voice in this. The third thing you have to have is the staff needs to be excited about it. I don't know if you've, once again, if you've ever been a part of a strategic planning process, at the end of the process, everyone is so tired and beaten to the floor, you can't go on. It's like when you overtrain for a marathon. If you overtrain for a marathon and can't run the race, what's the point of doing it? You need to come out of a strategic planning process, the crew is excited, and they're unified, and they're pumped because we have a direction that we're going. So clearly, who is doing what? The community is involved, and the idea that we have a real enthusiasm with the crew, and I think, I hope you can feel it from our energy, when we do this, we make it fun and engaging for the crew. So there are three phases which we go by. I'm going to talk about phase one, then we'll do phase two, and then we'll do phase three. Phase one, what we want to do is we want to meet with, with the board. We want to meet with you all, and we're going to ask, and go through an exercise in which we talk about vision. What is the vision for Palmer School? Where do we want to go? In three years from now, we look back, what does success look like? We really want to get that up there. Then, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We want to understand what the baseline is right now to move forward. Then we do a cultural piece. What kind of culture do we intentionally want to have here? If you don't have a clear idea of the kind of culture we want to have, you can't have it. So we do that exercise with the board. We then also do that exact same exercise with senior leadership. And it's always fascinating to see where is the board, and where is senior leadership? Where are they aligned? And where are they off? Not in a bad way, but just sometimes there's misunderstandings in different language. So we really have a clear idea where everyone is at. So the board is very much involved in that, and very much driving that part. Now we go into phase two, which is the community engagement process. Want to tell us a little about that?
Sure, thanks, Tom.
Sure.
So we feel really strongly about making sure that we get everyone's voices heard. That is staff, that is the community partners, that is students, that's the board. We really value everyone's voice. And so we break our community engagement into three different sections. The first are focus groups. I'm sure you've all been a part of focus groups. We do this with really nice, big, open-ended questions. What do people see as the strengths of Palmer City Schools? What are some weaknesses or challenges? We talk about other things like, how do you think they're doing with communication? And so what we do is we do this in a strictly anonymous fashion. We gather all of that data and all of the trends, and we take that, and we make that as part of what we're going to do to build our goals and objectives. The second part, yeah, sure.
One of the things we do with those groups, we find great successes. Well, someone from the school district will, will welcome folks, you know, because we're so happy you're here. And then we have the person from the school district leave, because we like, the idea is that we found that most, most people in communities, frankly, they're just nice. And they, they'll tell you what you want to hear. So when you have, when you have the school official leave, and people are able to say what's really on their hearts, that's where you get the good stuff. So those focus groups are really engaging, and it allows the opportunity for them to really say what's on their minds.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yep. The second part are community surveys. These questions are structured very similarly to the focus groups. So we do two different sets of community surveys. One is for the district staff, and the other is for parents and the community members. So we leave this open for about thirty days or so, and we allow people to fill out the survey. It is just another opportunity for those who couldn't attend the focus groups, but we really do want to hear what they have to say. So the surveys are a great piece of data for us. The third part of our community engagement are phone interviews. We'll do about eight to ten phone interviews with different people within the area, within the community, that you feel like we really want to hear their voice. That could be members of the road release. I'm going to be honest, if there's a large manufacturing area here that we want to talk to, we want to get their information as well. So between the focus groups, the surveys, and the phone interviews, it really gives us an opportunity to get everyone's voice and gather all of that data.
Generally, those interviews are, you know, state or district manager of a huge corporation, they're not coming to a focus group, but they will take the phone call, and frankly, it builds well for the schools that you're reaching out to them. Actually, let me take a huge step back. I forgot to say something at the beginning. Before we get into phase one, we have a whiteboard session with you all. We actually sit down with the board and with leadership, and what we want to talk about is overall, what is the, are there any bumpers on this thing? Sometimes we'll work with school boards, and they'll say, this guy's own, you know, there's everything. We've also, we had one community one time, where they said, we'll do anything but we're not building a recreation center. I don't care what they do, because we can't do it. So sometimes there are bumpers. Sometimes there, when we get into this, we'll say, this is what we're doing? These are, these are kind of the areas, and we'll go other times. But what I'm getting at is at the beginning, we're going to talk with you all, and you're going to set up what this thing looks like, what we're going to do. Third phase, so now we've got all that community input, now what we do is we take all that information with best practices, and the way the structure is, you build goals, objectives, and action steps. A goal is large. A goal might be external communications. Our schools, we're going to communicate our value to the, to the community. That's, that's a goal. An objective is something specific you're going to do over the next three years to drive that goal. So an objective, you know, like, we're going to build a new website. Because we found that all that, people need a new website, because that is something that if we do it well, it's going to drive external communication. So in the next phase, we're putting, we're giving this back to you all as the board and leadership, and saying, are these the right goals and objectives? Do these get us where we need to go over the next three years? And we, we'll go back and forth, and we'll chisel them down and make that work. So then we've got that. The final piece now is we'll work, we'll get the senior leadership in a room, and what we do is we get all the senior leaders, and we put all their names up on a whiteboard, and we begin to go through the different objectives. So for example, we'll say, okay, we have a whole room full of people. Goal one is external communications, objective one is build a new website. Who here would drive that goal? And the person who would drive technology says, that's mine. So we'd say, great. And together, we all do this, we'll say, what, what is a logical time? Baseline, recommendations, implementation, measurement. When is a logical time that you believe we can have the baseline understanding of where we are, have our website? And she might say, gosh, you know what, I can have that done by June of twenty-four. Great. When can we have, based upon the baseline, the recommendations are how do we go from our present state of baseline to the intended goal of the objective? When can we have the recommendations? And I say, how about October of twenty-four? Awesome. When do you think we can launch that website? How about January of twenty-five? When can we measure the effectiveness? How about January of twenty-six? What we do is we work with the group, and we actually, we determine the timeline to build out the, the action steps then. So what we've got is we've got the buy-in from the staff, they volunteered, and we leave that meeting with a clear idea of who is doing what, when, and how is it measurable. So we then take all that information, and then we then present that to the board again. So I'm not sure you guys all see, we've got the very highest level objective, goals, action steps, and then that's your plan. We've then provided a couple ways. There's a very high-level piece that you would display in the hall, and then we'll see these are our goals, and there's the very, very tactical, as far as who is doing what. When that is all finished then, you want to talk about that, what we do after that quarterly check-in or such?
Yeah, actually, I want to put a tag in.
Yeah, please.
Part of what we do when we're doing that action step timeline is when we give that objective to someone, we ask them if they want to contribute. And so it allows them to have someone as an accountability partner, so they're not doing all the work. We believe so strongly in many hands make like work. And so if somebody says, you know, I'll take that goal, I'll take that objective, does anyone want to do it with me? And it's a really nice way to do collaborative teamwork to get those goals and objectives checked off the list. So yes, we work with a lot of districts who enjoy having us as an accountability partner. And so what that looks like is after we enter the strategic plan, which by the way, takes about four months for us to do it from start to finish, we will come out and we will meet with you every quarter. And that gives us an opportunity to kind of do a quick temperature check, like thumbs up, thumbs down, how are we doing? Do we need to make any alterations? We understand our strategic plan is a living, breathing document. Things happen. You can't always be exactly on time. So when you check in with us every quarter, we'll say, how is that going to go? Good, okay. Well, let me change that website one. Maybe I can't do it in June of twenty-four, but I can do it in August of twenty-four. Great, no problem. And we edit that document and give it back to you. At the end of the year, we come out and we do like a full two-hour, we'll check in more, a little bit more detailed, to make sure everything is rolling exactly as it should.
The plan should be, a well-constructed plan drives the process. I mean, because everyone has agreed to it, there are clear ideas, so it's just, and it's kind of an organizational nerd. It is, it is fun when all of the different objectives, they're all in parallel, they're all moving together. One of the other aspects of those quarterly meetings, which is so powerful, is kind of organizational dynamic, sometimes when everybody's doing different things. Curriculum isn't necessarily listening to transportation, when they're giving a report, and transportation isn't necessarily listening to food service, because everybody's busy. Well, what you want to do is in those meetings, it is an opportunity for the organization to really understand clearly how all the different pieces impact the other pieces, and this thing just moves forward. So we deliver the plan, and then we have the quarterly meeting in which we're driving it forward, and it just, it just works. One of the things we'd love you to do is if you have any questions, just talk to the many, many, many districts we've done this for. I think you'll find that they, they just rave about the process. Any questions about the, about the overall process, how we approach it, or how we, how we go about this?
Can you just emphasize that you believe that starting this work in January would lead to a conclusion by mid-June-ish? We would be looking at beginning the strategic plan, the implementation for next school year.
Absolutely. We could definitely begin this in January. In fact, we think we can have the plan delivered to you by the end of the night, if not by June first. So you allow everything by the end of the year.
What we'd want to do is, this is a great way to complication, right? So the idea is, you have it all ready to go, and then we launch in the next year, but if this plan works out, we'll, 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 no problem.
Thank you. Approximately, how many meetings would you have to have for focus groups? I mean, how many, how many meetings, sorry, how many meetings are we talking about?
Generally, in a situation like this, you probably have two, two to three, our community meetings for the staff. What we'd like to do is to give the staff members as many opportunities as we can. So we like to even come out on a day and just do a series, right? So the staff members can choose when to come, and then if they can't come to a meeting, then they can contribute via the survey. What do we have, probably six or seven focus groups?
Yeah, I think we have, well, I think my glasses are broken. We've got district staff, three, student focus group, one, one with community leaders, and then two parent slash community focus groups.
And what we'll do with that is, that's kind of our baseline, but if you all say, gosh, we have another group we want to talk to, let's talk, we'll talk to them, no problem.
You have so many students. I mean, you're about nine thousand students. I can see us doing two or three focus groups for students alone. So we definitely will work with you and give you what you need.
Those student ones, we did one last alone, where the, the middle school kids recommended that they, they teach technology to the teachers, because the teachers had no idea. It was actually really fun, and they, they had decided that's what they're going to do. They put this whole thing together, but the idea is, the kids come up with the fabulous, and that's a good piece to it.
So with those focus groups, Dr. Smilak, you would be the one just to come in and introduce, and then be gone? So we really do like.
I can handle that.
Okay. It gives us an opportunity, as Tom said, to come in and do it like back-to-back-to-back through your own day or two or more, and gives you just an opportunity to come in, introduce us, and just take everything there.
And we want to definitely work with the board, however, however you want to work with us to help guide this process. I mean, you are setting the strategic direction of the district, so we're going to, let's just together make this group.
We know how valuable your voice is, and we want you to be a part of it from start to finish. And so starting with that board swat and the visioning for the culture is so important to us. We really value what you have to say.
Can I ask too, how do you, how do you get around, not around, but how do you, you want to have that session with the board? How have you done in previous districts with Sunshine Loss? Because I would think that needs to be opened to.
You do it in open.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can't hear you. And no, we can't, and it's live stream, so I'm not sure if you can.
You have to speak directly into the microphone.
Okay. No problem.
Sorry.
Was it a question? Well, Sunshine, we do it in open session.
Okay.
That's the way it is.
Okay.
We'll just have a session, and then, and then certainly, if anybody has an opinion of any kind, we can, we can get emails, whatever else. We do it in open session, yes.
Okay, thank you. So what were some of the districts that you worked with? So, I mean, I have friends elsewhere, I just want to know, a little inside poop on you guys, a little bit.
Gosh, we're finishing with Rocky River right now, Westlake.
Orange City Schools, Orange Community Education, Rec. We just did Strongsville City Schools.
Westlake.
Westlake.
Streetsboro, I think.
Streetsboro. We did Hudson.
Yeah, I've got to listen.
That's okay. I mean, that's, there's a few of them, I was just wondering, because I know people who, three of those places.
Gosh, Plain, Perry.
Perry, like nuclear power plant Perry?
No, we've done their professional development, let's see. They were doing some Upper Arlington, we did Alliance.
We did Conneot Area City Schools, New Philadelphia, Dover.
Okay.
Chicago, Canton City Schools.
That's, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's more. For the week, there's more.
No, you could, you could share it with me later or something. No, that's very good. Do you have any questions, Cindy? Jason?
I saw you at OSBA convention.
Oh, cool.
Capitol Conference, I guess I should say, and grabbed some literature, so that was interesting.
Did you get a full candy bar too? Because we're the Fun Kids at Halloween.
I did not.
I remember that.
Yeah?
Yeah. Angela and I walked by.
This is just, we're really passionate about this. We're, we just love working with schools. We're passionate about strategic planning and the positive impact it has on a community. So we'd be really honored to work with you all.
All right. Thank you.
It sounds like you provide a lot of guidance.
Oh, yeah.
Throughout the process.
I just had one.
I've sat in some other strategic planning initiatives many years ago, and it was sort of how you referenced, that you work through the plan, and it seemed much more quickly than the process that you're speaking of. But then I kind of felt like we were dropped a little bit, you know? We didn't have a lot of, a lot of follow-through, and some of the things like you referenced, the objectives got lost, because, and sometimes things come up, you know? District stuff happens, and there certainly can be issues related to funding, and, you know, passage of levies, those sorts of things that impact what, what's able to be done. But it sounds real interesting.
One of the things we promise, it's like a coach, like, in a football game, like, I've got every play planned out. Good, good luck. That's like, you know, so the idea is that it very much, we promise with all the different action steps, things are going to shift. But the idea is they don't fall off, that they shift and they move, but at the end, it all gets done, but in relation to the other objectives. So it works out pretty well. Yes, Mr. Ruda?
Yeah, so you're, excuse me, the focus groups and all that that you do, what is the engagement of us in that process? Do we just, you guys just do all that stuff, and then you present it to us? Or, like, when we've done our, building our future committees and all that, we always had two board members at, at the things, so that, you know, we can listen to what people were saying, so that we can report back to each other as to what people were saying to help us make a decision when stuff is presented to us? Same kind of thing happens, or?
Well, there are different methodologies, but honestly, the way it works best is that we have the, the planning sessions with you all at the beginning, having an idea of where we're going, and then you allow a third party to conduct those meetings, and then, then we then present all themes to the board. The rationale being that people, they just don't say what's on their minds. I mean, I've done this a long time, that if there's a board member, or if there's administrator, and they know that there are people, they pull their punches. Where if you have a group that says, look, there's, nobody's going to be reporting specifically, or we're going to report themes, you get the good stuff. So what we would, what we would do is we'd gather all that, and then we're going to report back to you, this is with no, no filter. This is what was, obviously anonymity, but this is what people felt, this is what all the rest, and then with that information, we then go forward.
So, so the board and the leadership teams are involved at the beginning.
Yes.
To kind of set what we want, and then you guys go out and make it happen.
Right, and there are phase one, phase two, phase three. So phase one, we're getting all the information with, with, we're working with you guys. Phase two, we're gathering from the community, and phase three, now you guys are back, you're back in. So now we're presenting that information, and you collectively are saying, I'm sorry, you're collectively are saying, those goals make sense, those objectives make sense. So you're very much molding this thing all the way, but that, the data gathering, you won't, you just won't be in the room when the data is being gathered. You'll be presented with all the data.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I just want to apologize. You should have told me page ten. I know what it is, I read it myself.
No problem.
Page, page ten.
I'm so sorry.
How do you reconcile, like, so we have, traditionally, we have not a lot of participation when we send out surveys. when we send out surveys. So whether it be from community, from parents, specifically whoever, like, out of the amount of people that we have in the community, and the kids that we have in the district. So how do you reconcile that? Or do you just go with what is turned in and kind of hope for the best?
Well, you try to, try to get out there as best you can, and sometimes, an example, like a community focus group, and this is all in the whiteboard session we talked about, to have a community focus group, and then people come in, it doesn't work, because people, just the general folks, what you do is you go to where they're at. Could we, has anybody been to a Rotary meeting, where they have the presenters in the middle?
Yeah, we don't have Rotary, but.
Well, I mean, the idea of like service clubs or whatever else, that you go to where they're at. So to get the community, you go where they're, for the surveys, what you do is you do as many, you get it out as best you can, but then we find out, is there a recreation center? Is there a community place? Can we put out paper surveys? Can we, we do our very best to make it as available to as many people as you possibly can, and you go to where people are. So we try to get really creative.
And we also know that you can't just send a survey link out once, you have to do it multiple times. So that's when you'll work with us, and we'll say, okay, we only have about 100 respondents, let's send it out again, and let's send it out again, because we know that people need anywhere between 11 and 15 times to think about something, to take an action on something. So we will make sure that that is deployed in as many opportunities to as many different communication platforms as possible to get the highest number of respondents.
I mean, the truth is that we have to work with you to do that. You have access to the lists, you have access to the folks, we'll have to work together to get that out there. And what we need to do is to present the opportunity. I mean, at the end, we can't, we can lead folks to water, you know? I mean, but we can't make them drink, so, but we, the opportunities as we can, we'll work with you to make sure we get as much input as we can.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes.
My apologies for being late at a drop off for kids after school function. How is this going to be paid for? I'm wondering, and back to our budget.
There will be no impact to the general fund. We have ESC money, which is state subsidy, so it's a separate account that is not the general fund, and that's sufficient enough to handle what's the type of, type of dollar figure we're looking at.
Great, thank you.
Great, I don't have any more questions. Do you have any questions more? No?
No, not right now, I mean.
I know, we will later.